Will counsel please come to order and will the clerk please call the roll?
Anderson?
Present.
Oliver?
Here.
Borda's absent. Hager Smith?
Here.
Mattingly?
Here.
Sutton?
Here.
Watson?
Present.
We'll begin this evening with our consent agenda, and the first item there is approval of town council minutes for September 10. And in addition, we have Resolution 9A24 approving the Blacksburg Transit Title VI program. We'll adopt that resolution. What is counsel's pleasure?
I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Oliver?
Aye.
Hager Smith?
Aye.
Mattingly?
Aye.
Sutton?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Tonight, we have one public hearing, and that is on Resolution 9B24. This is a resolution granting a special exception related to agriculture at 301 Royal Lane. And we'll begin with the staff presentation.
Matthew Sampa has the staff presentation.
This is a special exception request to allow an agricultural use on a lot that is less than two acres in our one zoning district. The request was made by the property owner Anthony Grafsky, and the subject property is located at 301 Royal Lane. The request was initiated after town council received complaints about farm animals on the property. The applicant was sent a violation letter on June 24, 2024, and the special exception request was subsequently filed on July 7. The request is to keep one pig and two goats as pets on the property. The subject parcel is a one-acre corner lot with frontage on Royal Lane and Farmview Drive. The lot contains a single-family dwelling with a fenced rear yard. And here's an aerial view showing the subject area outlined. Special exceptions are evaluated per Section 11112 of the zoning ordinance. Exceptions can be granted by the town council, and the copy of the plan, purpose of the zoning district, and intent of the standard in question should be considered when evaluating the exception. Special exceptions are typically used in design standards such as parking in front of the front building line or buffer yard modifications. And most special exceptions may be heard with an accompanying conditional use permit or rezoning enacted upon in conjunction with the action on the CUP or rezoning petition. However, exception requests to use in design standards may be made without an accompanying rezoning or CUP application. And here's the site layout provided with the application that shows the enclosure area for the animals. In evaluating whether the proposed special exception conforms to the general guidelines and policies contained in the copy of the plan, applicable sections of the plan should be included in the review of the application. The future land use designation of the subject area is low-density residential. Specific uses are also governed by the implementing zoning district. Agriculture is a byright use in the R1 zoning district. The subject area is also an urban development area H and is in a suburban residential neighborhood. And this is a map showing the future land use of the property. And this map shows the R1 zoning district.
Matthew, while you have that up there, in our work session, we talked about how it is that a two-acre lot would have accommodated this without any exceptions. So are some of these pictures here two-acre lots?
In the cul-de-sac there with the subject property, there are two lots that are two acres, but the rest are pretty much one acre.
So among all those, two of the sites are two acres.
Definition of agriculture as seen in zoning ordinance Section 2103 states that the keeping of a pig or goat shall constitute agriculture regardless of the size of the animal and purpose for which it is kept. Although agriculture is a byright use in R1, the use in design standards for agriculture state that the parcel must be greater than two acres. The applicant has requested an exception to this standard. Although the keeping of a pig is considered agriculture and agriculture is an allowable use in the R1 zoning district, Town Code Section 5-105 restricts the keeping of a pig to within agricultural or forested districts. The Town Code and zoning ordinance are inconsistent with each other in this regard, and if the exception is granted, an amendment to Town Code Section 5-105 would also be necessary to allow the keeping of hogs in areas other than an agricultural or forested district. The intent of the standard in question is to provide adequate space for the keeping of animals and minimize impacts such as noise, dust, water quality, air quality, and odor. The staff recommends the following four conditions dealing with the keeping of only one pig and two goats, the location in which they are kept, the expiration date of the exception, and the effectiveness of the resolution. And that concludes my presentation. Can I answer any questions?
Okay, thank you. Did you tell us what the planning commission recommendation was, Matthew?
They recommended to approve 302.
302 and two abstaining. And we have time now for the applicant statement.
All right. Good evening, council members. Mayor Hager Smith, thank you for this opportunity to present to you this evening. I'm Anthony Grafsky, owner applicant, and I just wanted to start out by saying or sharing my appreciation for all the work that the staff has put in on this and their assistance to me along the way, all the research they've done and everything. So thank you to them. You know, I attended your work session last week, and I apologize for my attire. I was at Shulam Motor Mile waiting for my car to get done. But, you know, I had the opportunity to answer some questions for you then, and I thought I'd take the opportunity this evening to actually introduce you to the animals that we're asking or requesting the exception for and just give you a little bit of background on them as well. So we're going to start with Brutus. And so Brutus came into our lives, this was probably the fall of 2022, and he was a patient at the veterinary teaching hospital at Virginia Tech where I was employed at the time. And Brutus was about a six-month-old Cooney Cooney pig. They're native to New Zealand. They're bred for pasture grazing, so he's not a digger. He's not a roller. He's actually a bit bougie, if you will, as far as pigs go. And but he came in, he had been attacked, and I don't know if you can see it or his head, there's this, there's a sponge. So he had come in, he had been attacked by something, and was actually missing an ear. The owners were offered the opportunity to humanely euthanize him. They elected to pursue all available treatments, and over the course of the next eight weeks or so, we aggressively treated his wounds. But as the bills started racking up, the owners stopped answering the phone. Being an Ohio State Buckeye, don't hold that against me, the staff introduced me, they're like, you've got to meet Brutus. And so I went down and met Brutus, would give him snacks, kind of watched him progress. And then once the owners stopped coming around, they were like, you should keep him, you should keep him. And anyhow, so, once he was ready for discharge, and we had gone through all the processes with the owners, we brought Brutus home. And this was in like October, I think, 2022. And so this is a picture of Brutus around Christmas time, snuggling with one of my sons, Ethan there. He spent a lot of time indoors with us early on as he was still continuing to recover and things like that. He and Ethan have a pretty special bond. This was Christmas of that year, and if you'll recall, over Christmas, we had a couple of weeks where it was extremely cold, and so Brutus spent, again, more time indoors with us. He curled up in a dog bed and fell asleep there next to my sister-in-law. And on evenings that he didn't sleep inside, he slept in the garage in a dog crate. On the right, that's him auditioning for the Cadbury Easter Bunny at Easter of 2023. And I don't think this is going to work. This was a video, this was him and my son Ethan, who you saw earlier. Ethan took him for a walk. He's just like a well-behaved dog. And so you'd see Brutus trotting along with Ethan, and they stop, and he sits, and then they go on, and then they walk back to the house. But the intent there was just to give you a little flavor of Brutus's disposition. Essentially, he's a dog. I guess it would be helpful to let you know. So now, fast forward, Brutus is about two and a half years old. He's full grown. For all intents and purposes, we could continue to fatten him up, if you will, but that's not good for his long-term health, so we're very careful about what he eats and when he eats and things like that.
Let me try to see if it'll work, Anthony.
At this point, Brutus is about the size of our, we have corgis at home as well.
It's not me, just walking my pig.
In fact, he's more well behaved than the corgis are. There you go, there's Brutus. And so that's Brutus, but so I said, he's two and a half years old, he's fully grown, at least is fully grown as we're hoping to let him be. He weighs approximately 90 pounds and stands about 18 inches, 24 inches off the ground. So again, this is the size of a large dog, squat, large dog. And this is LJ and Ziggy. So they came to us from a producer's, they were being bred for meat. And we brought them home at four weeks old, and so they hadn't been weaned yet. And we bottle-fed them for the next eight weeks, which initially was like six times a day, and it was a whole ordeal, but we were committed to giving these guys the best life that they could have. And so we've got LJ here on the left, Ziggy on the right. Very curious, very social animals, again, and because of the environment, the way that we have raised them, you know, they really are family members, you know, much like your dog greets you at the door when you walk in. At the end of the day, these guys greet you at the fence line once you get home from work. Ziggy, or LJ there on the right, got stuck in a blanket and came to the door asking for some assistance. And here they are, full grown. So again, they're a little bit taller, about four feet probably at the head, but they're approximately 50 to 60 pounds, and they're full grown as well. And then the next couple of pictures is just to give you an idea of their enclosure, the condition of that enclosure, the fact that besides that little dirt patch there along the side, the front of the fence, that's where they get their grain in the morning, and so they run across that. You know, the area stays very clean. Brutus, much like a dog, you clean up after him like a dog, but because they're on vegetarian diets, it makes great compost, so we take their waste, their leftover hay, shavings from our chickens and things like that, leftover food, and compost that and put it into our, put it into use. But just wanted to give you an idea of the area that they're in. They've got plenty of space. If you've ever seen, you know, I compare them a lot to dogs because that's kind of how we treat them, but when a dog gets the zoomies, goats get the zoomies, except they're kind of hoppy and wiggly, and they still have plenty of opportunity to do that. And then their two favorite places to hang out is on the trampoline, and then at the top of those stairs on the second floor of the shed in the back, and the shed is where they sleep, where they and Brutus sleep now. And in the winter, when it's cold, we are able to run like heat lamps out there and things like that to keep them warm if necessary. And that is all I have for you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Yeah, does we have any questions?
So this was for a 10-year term of the exception, is that right?
Yes.
And if something should happen to any one of these animals, would you then be able to replace them and still have two goats and a pig, or is it specifically for these animals and their lifespan?
The conditions in the resolution say it's for the existing animals.
Oh, I understood it.
And pig and two goats currently owned.
Okay.
Yeah.
And the approximate lifespan of pigs and goats in captivity is similar to a dog, like 15 years. So if you all do approve of this, I'll probably be back in front of you in a decade or so, as long as all goes well.
Do we have other questions for Anthony? Thank you.
Thank you.
And at this time, we will take public comment on Resolution 9B24. As you come up to the microphone, please state your name and your address. And you have three minutes on the little traffic light there.
Good evening. My name is Bruce Herman, and my family has lived at 300 Lehman Court for more than 22 years. And as such, if you know the geography there, our property, the Grafsky's property are essentially side by side. Our property is only 60 feet away from the enclosures, and so I can tell you firsthand that there is zero problem evident to us in any aspect with those animals. There is virtually no noise, no smell. The two pygmy goats and pot-bellied big are secure, friendly, safe. They have ample space, ample shelter. Many people, I believe, would find them less intrusive than a lot of dogs and cats. I've interacted with those animals myself literally hundreds of times. They rush to greet me when they see me and my dog, never fail to brighten my day, and beyond that, my wife and I are virtually unaware that they even exist, and they're only 60 feet away. I know that at the planning commission meeting, there was one person who spoke in opposition to the exception, and I just wanted to point out that that person's residence is more than 1,000 feet from the animal's enclosure. To even see the enclosure, that person would have to walk across three properties on foot to even see those animals. And their objections, from what I heard and watching that video, were issues that were long ago resolved or just were nonexistent. As far as I know, the Grafskys have responded to and rectified every potential concern that their more proximate neighbors have raised. The only residual arguments and opposition that I've heard have come from outside the Royal Lehman neighborhood and are purely speculative or positions grounded in apparent ignorance of the facts. So I would please urge you to do what I think is not only the right and obvious thing here, but also the humane thing for both the family and the animals, and grant this exception. Thank you.
Hi, Lisa.
Hi, Lisa. Hey, Leslie. I'm Lisa Sedlack. I live at 303 Royal Lane, which is right next to the Grafskys. And Bruce stole some of my thunder, but I'll go ahead and read what I have anyway. So I'm stating my support of this exemption request. As their neighbor, the Grafskys have constantly communicated with us their plans for their pets, and Brutus, LJ, and Ziggy are pets. They are quiet, and there's no smell, and they're well taken care of and bring joy to my family and to visitors of my home. One resident at the planning commission meeting that lives two streets down had mentioned that the animals are distraction to those driving by. However, the animals are kept on the other side of the property adjacent to mine and are not visible from Farmview. The comprehensive plan states that we are located in a UDA, whereas we're slated for growth and maybe smaller homes on smaller lots are coming in the future, this should not be an issue when it comes to 301 Royal Lane as the closest empty parcels are a town park and a plot owned by Good Samaritan Hospice. In addition to my support of the exemption, I ask that staff reevaluate the regulations concerning what is considered a pet and what is not, and expanding that definition, perhaps using this as a pilot case. Brutus, LJ, and Ziggy are quieter than most dogs that are kept on smaller lots in town. Once again, I support this exemption and look forward to spending more time with Brutus and company. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to Resolution 9B24? Seeing no one else, I will close public comment, and I'm assuming we don't have a rebuttal. Okay. What is, what is counsel's pleasure?
I move approval of Resolution 9B24.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second, and I'd like to hear what is on the minds of, I think some of us have struggled with this, so I'd like to hear what people have to think about it.
I'll say a few things. I don't believe that ignorance of the code is an excuse to violate the code, and I do not wish to set a precedent. However, when you look at the feelings of the neighbors that are in close proximity and the concerns that have been raised have been addressed satisfactorily by the applicant, I'm convinced that the animals are well cared for. One of the concerns was proximity to the highway and the safety. If you go a mile further down the bypass, there are cows to the left of you and horses to the right of you. It's a condition all over our town. I don't see any advantage to separating this family from their pets. There's no greater good served. So I support the exception with the current conditions as stated.
Thank you.
So I made the motion, but I do have mixed feelings about this proposal, as I'm sure others do as well. On the one hand, I understand that farm animals aren't appropriate in a residential-style neighborhood, but on the other hand, I don't want to separate a property owner and her family from their pets. I think with the, within this particular exception that has the kind of narrow conditions that involves the animals that are currently there, and also with the comments we heard from the most immediate neighbors who would be most affected by this, I'm comfortable with this exception.
Okay, I'll go ahead and we can just go in order. I'm uncomfortable. I have been all along, and it seems like a case of, I don't think that there was any question that it was understood that this was not acceptable. And it feels like a case of deciding two years ago to beg forgiveness instead of permission. So I'm very uncomfortable with that, and I don't want that to be our precedent. But as I've listened carefully to town staff, the considerations we were asked to make were what was the intent of the standard, what does the plan say about quality of life, and what is the purpose of the zoning district? And if we look at that carefully, you do see that there is this Town Code and zoning ordinance discrepancy. They're inconsistent at this time. I don't want to make the decision based on the fact that the pig is cute with one ear or other personal considerations. And I'm also uncomfortable with characterizing opponents as ignorant or without standing. They have standing because it matters that we all live well together and that we live by rules. By having said all that, I am inclined to go ahead and approve this exception, but I do want people to understand, we are going through what will be a lengthy process, but we are looking at our zoning ordinance for reform, and this will surely be one of the places that needs to be scrutinized, so.
Well, I support this. I think a very important piece is the restriction on this being just for the one pig and the two goats currently owned, that we're not going to have rotating animals on this property over time. And a huge impact for me is the support the neighbors have for the animals. The older I get, the more I see shades of gray, and this one is one of those in-between kind of situations. I do understand a concern about precedent, but I think in situations like this, we have to look at each one of these requests on a case-by-case basis and see what the neighborhood feels like, to see what the circumstances of the landowner is, or I should say are. And so I'm very comfortable voting in favor of this.
Yeah, I second my colleagues' concerns, but it's also a case-by-case issue, and it's a one-acre lot, and it being these particular animals not becoming a petting zoo, so I'm in favor of it.
I'd share all of my colleagues' thoughts. I usually find that I make better decisions if I go see an applicant's property, so I reached out to Mr. Grafsky the other day and got to tour the fence that's been constructed there and meet the animals firsthand, and they're lovely and well behaved and excellent upstanding members of our Blacksburg community. So of course, I'm very much so in favor of this, but I did also want to commend Mr. Grafsky on his kindness towards these animals, taking them in in the first place when they were either slated to be euthanized or to become food. So I think that's a wonderful sort of attitude to have here in Blacksburg, so thank you for that.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. We've had our discussion, and if there is not more to say, will the clerk please call the roll?
Hager Smith?
Aye.
Mattingly?
Aye.
Sutton?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Oliver?
Moving on now to citizen comments. And when you come forward, please, speaking to the microphone, Zachary Weiss, I know your name. I have not memorized your address, so you'll have to give us that.
That's all good. What of counsel? My name is Zachary Weiss. I live at, right now, 1711 Whipple Drive, Apartment 9. So first, I would like to thank you, Mayor, Madam Mayor, for recognizing that the zoning in this town needs to be reformed, because I've made many speeches, comments about that. Thank you for that. So I don't have a PowerPoint today because I was not, I did not think I would get here in time to do the PowerPoint, but I do have an outline of a PowerPoint, a prize of why we should prioritize electronic recycling again. Now, Griffin is not present here to meet you, Madam Mayor, but I assure you, I'm continuing to try and get him here. So first, for the first reason that we should incentivize electronic recycling is because kids, like I mentioned earlier, can learn a new skill, and they can make memes on their printer that Griffin recycled two weeks ago. The second reason is Griffin actually recycles, and I'm happy for him. And, you know, we should all be trying to emulate Griffin's example. So and then the third reason is that we want to be good people, right? So something that you should know is that the new iPhone is coming out, I don't know what number it is, and as a lot of people should know, is that there's been a, for 30 years, a genocide for economic gain has been perpetrated in the Eastern Democratic Republic of Congo. Now, this is, these are military squabbles for resources, cobalt and coltan, both used for electronics that go into these devices. So one reason that we should incentivize electronic recycling is so we can put our money where our mouth is and buy refurbished phones and electronics and build the things that we want to use and use them well and repair them. So I'm not a big fan of the companies in this country funding proxy wars and the states in the global economy funding these proxy wars too. So I think on a small scale, electronic recycling can be a form of power that we can exert, especially as a town. I just want to say that there have been a lot of deaths, millions of deaths, a lot of people have died because of this conflict. of people have died because of this conflict. So there's a lot of things that we should be considering, not just, not just that, oh, my phone can, you know, do the newest AI thing. I just, so what can we do? So I think we should consider opting for refurbished phones before purchasing a new one. We should assess if you actually need to buy a new phone, or, and also, you know, follow, follow my example and spread awareness about this issue. So I'm getting this information from Team Congo RDC on, dot RDC on Instagram, so give them a follow. Just do this. I don't know if you can zoom in online, but, okay, now let me go back, so. Fourth reason, Griffin recycles. Uh, fifth reason, we should reduce our carbon emissions, and we want to be good people. So please take into, into account what your buying power is, and also where you should be incentivizing your, your local support. Yes, we should prioritize electronic recycling. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in this comment period?
Lisa Sedlak, 301 Royal Lane, no, 303 Royal Lane. I wanted to take this opportunity to thank Matt Hamready and staff for the response to speeding on Farm View Drive. There have been many close calls as I've pulled out of Royal Lane, and there's been a lot of issues with speeding in general, people coming from the Warth, Warm Hearth area, just speed on Farm View, and there's a lack of visibility, so it's difficult to see them coming when you're pulling out. I know you guys are used to hearing complaints about staff, but I wanted to give a compliment.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I've got it, Rita. The remote, the clicker, if you hit the right button, should, should advance it. If it doesn't work, just let me know, and I'll do it for you. Yep, it's working.
So this, my name is Rita Brain, and I live at 5900 Chickwood Drive, Pulaski, Virginia, and I'm a local artist, and this is a piece that I did of Draper Block with Stella Rose in the middle, and I also brought a copy of 16 blocks that it was published in. This is the piano that I painted. I attached a canvas to the back of it because it was missing a back. This is my creative process and my inspiration writing for the piano. Here are some comments that people have written about their sadness from the damage of the piano. "The town knew full well that this piano was a catalyst for the creative community here in Blacksburg, and that piano was only gaining significance in that regard. It is incomprehensible that they would scrap it in the middle of the night instead of reaching out to that community, and the people behind that decision should be called out for it." Another comment, "The piano brought a lot of joy to people walking down Draper Street. I have heard and met some phenomenal musicians at the piano. Furthermore, Beats on the Streets has become an essential peaceful gathering of creative people from both local and college community, which is something that we need more of. The piano was the centerpiece. Blacksburg used to be a hub of music and art, it's getting carried away." Okay, let's see. Okay, um, this was an article in the Runet Times. "A piano located on Draper Road in downtown Blacksburg was removed after being damaged by recent construction. According to town officials, local artists are upset." This is the Public Arts Committee of Blacksburg. "For visual arts, the committee will advise on the acquisition placement, maintenance, display, loan, curation, and disposal of public art and artworks contracted for, placed on, occurring therein, and erected on property of the town of Blacksburg."
And now your time is up. Is there, would you like to conclude?
Still time.
That was, that was it. I think I just had like one more slide. So my last slide is...
Rita, you still have time. You still have 40 seconds.
Yeah, I, I read that wrong. Yeah, you've got 30...
Apologies.
Seconds, yeah.
Okay. Um, this is from the Christiansburg Public Art Policy. "Consideration will involve the same amount of careful review as a decision to receive a work of art for the de-ascension. The removal of an artwork from a public art collection may cause damage to the reputation of the artist who created it, and in turn may jeopardize the town's ability to attract high caliber artists for future projects, undermining the success of the public arts program." And here's the Google account for Stella Rose. And here's the Beats on the Streets, which is actually held tonight. Usually they get started like 7:30.
Is that the end?
That's it.
Yeah, I apologize, I, I thought it had started going up again.
It's like it's moving by five.
I read that wrong. Yeah. Thank you.
I'll, I'll, I'll start at heart, after you introduce yourself.
Hart Fowler, 209 College Avenue, Suite B, downtown Blacksburg, 16 Blocks Magazine.
I have a few prepared things to say, but I just wanted to follow Rita up. She is the closest policy we had around, and Christiansburg, Virginia Tech has one too. If you don't think this was a piece of art, I don't think you should be on any committee handling art in the future. If you just think it was a decorated piano, I don't think that qualifies you to be on a public arts committee or to have the ability to handle future pianos. The lack of care and disrespect offered to Rita was, was disturbing to them. So I was going to speak about police and how they exist in many shapes and forms. I've been patronized many times as a member of the Downtown Revitalization Committee. If it's just going to be run by two council members, then why have a committee? Let's see the work on the record. We know the piano project. What else? We spent 30 minutes meeting talking about quoting T-shirts, stepping out for a nonprofit. What else did we talk about? The Alexander Black House. The Blacksburg Museum and Cultural Foundation is present in every meeting. They've reported damage occurring to Charlie Brower's sculptures. What would Virginia Tech have done? You swept it under the rug a little bit. Nothing has been done. A police report has been filed. Let's get an update on that while we're talking about protecting art, and who's allowed to protect art in the future. Looking at the minutes on the Downtown Revitalization Committee, there was no mention of the local jam. An 800-square-foot mural that's going to be here forever in downtown Blacksburg, not even a nice job. You're also been polluted in leadership positions a little bit here in Blacksburg, I'm finding out more and more. When you're members of nonprofit organizations, it might pollute how you operate in committees as well. I don't know what's going on here, but anyone with a, I would believe, a sane mind knows that that was wrong with the piano, and it was a piece of art. Do we want people in leadership making these calls? I filed a Freedom of Information Act on the email communications on this, that I'll be publishing. You know, it's rather sad when we know the timeline and that the decision was made well before the piano was damaged. So basically, with the lack of report, what we do know is the piano was working fine, it beats on the streets, because we have a person that can analyze tones and uses it for a synthesizer. What we do know is the piano was taken to Cemetery Lot that Friday and was damaged in that dark time. Probably dropped off a tractor, as you can see by the photographs. So the piano was broken by the town on Cemetery Lot due to your decisions. Show me a report otherwise, please, because that is almost a malice, you know, malevolent act.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak under citizen comments? Okay, it looks like we are closing citizen comment, the citizen comment period. How about unfinished business? New business? And council announcements?
I can report that we have secured a new piano. The replacement piano is on its way. We just have to get it picked up and tuned and delivered.
Right, and I think this is the third or fourth...
It'll be the fourth piano.
So this is the fourth piano.
The place that the committee has placed in downtown.
Yeah, so it's fair to say that when they live in the wild and they are outside, that they don't last the same length of time that a piano in your front parlor would last. Anyone else?
Well, I just want to remind people that early voting is happening. I voted today, and my spouse and my mother-in-law and I went over, and we were in and out in five minutes. So easy to go to the registrar's office, so wait until Election Day if you want to, but if you want to make sure you get to vote, then maybe you'll be sick on Election Day. I'd say vote early.
Actually, I do have another announcement. Blues Brews and Barbecue is this Saturday. It's a good way to support the Blacksburg Museum and Cultural Foundation and learn a little bit about new town.
Noon to 4:30.
4:30.
Over at St. Lucan Oddfellows Hall.
Yeah, good. And anybody else?
Blues Brews and Barbecue.
I didn't hear. I didn't hear.
Sorry. I think we're on, we're on the microphone, aren't we? Chip? We're on, we're on microphone.
You look in here.
Okay. Well, I am the one with the biggest mouth. Okay. What, you want to go ahead and announce Blues Brews and Barbecue again?
Yeah, Blues Brews and Barbecue, this Saturday. It's the Blues Festival. Also get barbecue at the St. Luc's in Oddfellows Hall over on Gilbert Street.
Noon to 4:30.
A day of music and barbecue.
And beverages. And desserts.
Okay, thank you.
And to play off the, the early voting, so you can register up through October 15th. If you're a Virginia resident, you can register online. If you've just moved here and you don't have a Virginia driver's license, you can register on paper. I believe our Blacksburg Rec Center will have an early voting location as of October 21st.
9:00 AM.
9:00 AM, yeah. If you are a Virginia Tech student, you can register to vote here in town, regardless of whether your home is in Virginia or elsewhere. I urge you all to use your civic, civic privilege.
Thank you. And if there are no other announcements, we are adjourned.